We have a couple councillors that aren't going to be with us tonight. One just recovering from surgery and another one is not feeling a hundred percent. So, so we'll call ourselves to work. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I've got on the hard work that we did on.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll make that eight three. Hard work. Anything else? If not, can we have a motion to approve? No, second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any names?
Aye.
There as well. So we do the delegations first so that you don't have to sit here for hours and hours and hours. Make it sound like we're really busy, right? Uh, so we got front at first is we have the Digby Splash Pad Committee. We have Alison and anybody else presenting else?
Uh, yes, I have, we have two members here tonight. Jill's gonna come up with me, but we have Melissa and Madison here.
Okay, yeah. So we'll have you come right up to the two chairs here. If you need another one, if you want to come all together, just pull one way from the table there.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Yeah.
They're so excited.
I have a fear of splash parks.
Also, wait, no, we will get you over that tier.
No, not me. We were at Anna's Wonderland and we were at the splash park and I lost Sarah.
Oh, oh. Okay.
So ten minutes later, one of the workers came over and said, you look like a parent in distress. They had her.
Aw, but we probably promised that won't happen at this point. It's all fenced in and visible.
Okay, so you got the floor.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'll start by introducing myself. I think, I know most of the people are on the table for that.
There's people sitting behind me.
So, I'm Alison Basello and this is Jillian McNutt. And we're part of the Splash Park Society, the Digby Splash Park Society. We're trying to have a splash park built here in our town. So that in the summer, when our kids are saying, Mom, can we go to the splash park? We don't have to drive to Berwick or somewhere else to go there. So, uh, so we're working on Annapolis, yeah.
You have to say Annapolis. We have been there for Annapolis for this.
Okay. We have been to the Annapolis one. That's the only one we've been to, actually. My, my son hasn't been to the Berwick one or the Middleton one yet.
No.
Annapolis is as far as we go.
Yes.
Our bubble is small right now. We're hoping it can get a little bigger, but we still don't go far from home.
Alrighty. Um, so we are a community-based volunteer group, hundred percent volunteer. This is not our day job, but we feel really strongly about this initiative and are working on it in our free time. Um, it is community-led and we are working on getting support for the splash park. And we are also a nonprofit organization. We have that designation now, yes. Um, so a splash park, for anybody who doesn't know, um, there are multiple layers to a splash park. Um, there are different elements and it's all water-based. So you have fountains, you have jets, you have, if we say cannons, they're, they're kind of like water guns that are stuck in place. So you can move them around and aim the streams.
Where your son will aim at their mother every time he walks by.
Um, that being said, there is no standing water. So it, it doesn't collect, it goes back into the ground and.
And if there's a time of inactivity, the water is not on. Like there's a switch, there's a timer switch as well. And it's turned off, like there's someone that turns it on at the beginning of the day and turns it off at the end of the day so that it wouldn't be flowing all through the night.
And it is not, um, it's not a scheduled thing. So it would be like the playground type of idea. You could come when you wanted to show up and, and leave when you were done kind of thing. Um, so I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this slide. Um, we're gonna go into each of these sections a little bit more in-depth. So, um, why does our community need a splash park? There are multiple health, health benefits. Um, it's very inclusive for multiple levels of our community and tourism benefits. So this is what you want them to look like when they're done.
Some of you, some of you might recognize this child. This is Callahan St. Walsh. This is what my son always looks like when we leave the splash park. He's very worn out. Yeah, so unfortunately, thirty percent of children in Nova Scotia are overweight or obese due to a lack of activity. And the recommended activity is approximately an hour of moderate to intense activity a day. And if your children are at a park or a splash park, that hour goes by fairly quickly. It's sensory stimulation, so there's different tactile things for them to interact with and both for their hands and their feet. Cause there's, although it's like a very level ground, there's still, you know, things for them to step on and experience. So there's lots of gross motor activity, like jumping and running, and lots of fresh air sans masks. So that's very nice for children to get outside, get the fresh air.
Yes, so again, that's the goal when they're done.
I want a good night's sleep.
Yes.
Um, lots of social emotional learning. Um, play is so important, not just for children, but for all ages. And splash parks are for people of all ages. Um, I think the parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and people who go with the children have just as much fun as the children. Um, it helps them with regulating their emotions and it's inclusive for all ages and abilities. Um, you can interact with different age levels. It teaches some cause and effect and risk assessment. They'll soon figure out which area of the splash park they'll want to play on. Uh, splash parks are, we'll talk about it a little bit more in a few minutes, but they're kind of built with, like there's more of a toddler area and they kind of get progressively more exciting as you move through the park. So if you have little, little ones, they'll probably tend to stay more on the, you know, the toddler. More calm, more calm side of the park. Um, it builds confidence and of course, we're always wanting our children to become little discoverers and use their imaginations. And I guarantee, well, from my experience having gave at splash parks, they have lots of great imagination and they have a lot of fun trying to get their parents soaked.
Very inventive.
Not just their friends, but they're soaked. And I don't know if anyone's ever been to one. Um, sometimes they have like a big bucket or a big fan and they'll like to pretend that it's empty. And they'll say, go stand over here. All of a sudden, you're soaked.
Um, so accessibility for all. Um, we, the, the slab itself is flat and there's no lip. So when they, when they build it, um, the, the slab is completely flat. There are no, no dips or mounds or anything for you to trip over. It's very accessible. So if you're in a wheelchair, you have mobility issues, you're bringing a stroller, um, any of those pieces are going to have easy access to the park because there's no lip and there's no, um, the whole piece is flat. Um, there is clearance around each of the pieces. So you can kind of see here, there is a large space around each of the features. So, um, if you are in a wheelchair or you have extra things with you, there's lots of room to move around. Um, as we said before, there's zero depth water in the space. So, um, although there is lots of water, it goes directly back into the ground immediately. Um, it, the park that we are hoping to build, we are looking at a public, high-visibility, common area near lots of amenities and on a bus route. So that would make it very accessible for everybody in our community. Um, and it also encourages physical, functional and social development for participants of all ages and abilities. So it's open to everybody, anybody has access to it. Um, yeah.
It's kind of nice that, well, I guess we'll get into that in a minute. I'm jumping ahead. I'm just very excited, so we'll wait.
Um, this was really important to us that if we were gonna do something like this, it needed to be free. Um, one in four children in Nova Scotia is living in poverty. That is an even greater percentage. We're about thirty-five percent in the tri-county. So, um, even a minimal cost to the park was going to be out of reach for some of our families. Especially if you have two and three kids, even if it's only two dollars and you're having to pay two dollars per child every time you go. It's just not feasible for some families. Um, so it is local, it's in the area. You don't have to go far, you don't have to worry about too much gas. It's on the bus route, it's free and it's, the schedule is completely open. So you don't schedule a time like the rink or the pool. You can go whenever you want and leave when you're done. Um, so this would be the tourism piece. Um, the, um, it would, it promotes community pride and connection. So people who are already living in our community would have something new to enjoy. Um, it's promoting active living and outdoor play, which is really important as we've already discussed. Um, we'll get to the actual layout in a minute, but we did choose a nautical theme on purpose to kind of promote that aspect of living in Digby. Um, and it attracts business to the community. So people come, I, I've seen people do like splash pad hops. So you just go from one splash pad to the next. And as we said, it's really easy to kill an hour or two at a splash park. And if that's free, then they have more money to spend at other local businesses in the area. They're already here, they might go for lunch, they might go downtown and check out the market. Um, so you're bringing people into the community. You're not charging them anything to do this activity that's gonna take the better part of the day. And then they still have, um, the opportunity to come and connect with lots of our other local businesses. Um, long-term benefits would be attracting people to the area. Um, I'm, I'm not suggesting that a splash park by itself is going to attract doctors and nurses and, you know, other people that we, other professions that we need in the area. But the more of this kind of thing that we have available, the more likely we are to get people with young kids who are in professions that we want and we need in the area and say. So this is our proposed splash park layout. Um, there's a lot going on. Um, you can see kind of on the left there, or sorry, on the right, there are smaller features. Um, so that's kind of the toddler zone. The, the features are smaller, they're lower to the ground, they're less surprise oriented. So, um, kids who are smaller or a little bit more apprehensive, that's a great place for them to start. In the middle, we have, and all splash parks are designed this way on purpose. Um, in the middle, there's more of the family-oriented elements. So you've got a few more surprise features, things coming out of the ground. You can walk through the little whale there on the, the, towards the middle. Um, there are higher features, so there's just a little bit more experience in the middle. Um, and then over to the left, you've got more, um, more of the surprise features, things that you can walk under, um, a little bit more happening to entice the older kids and teens to, um, be running through that. So, um, and you can see the, the splash pad itself. There's the, the initial piece in the middle and then it's got kind of an extra piece around the outside so that, um, it's all, all encompassed for the water. So it's all going back into the ground and it's, you can see exactly where it's going to be.
And you can see on the side, there's a, on the left, there's a spot where if it is inactive for a little while, that would be the spot that people would push to turn the water back on.
Yeah, I can kind of see it like right there. Oh, the side, there it is. Uh, very good. I forgot I had a mouse.
So our proposed location is at the Vaughn Van Hassel Memorial Park. We looked at a few different locations, but as far as the availability for the water pressure that we needed and the electricity, this was the best location for it. Um, it's also fenced in, a fenced-in area and next to the other park. And it, it has access to security through the recreation department. The parking, big parking lot is already there. Um, it's on the bus route and like I said, the water and electrical is there, but it's also, um, close to the ball field and soccer field and, you know, other things that bring families into the area. So, uh, husband or wife is playing in a baseball game, partner and children are looking for something to do or maybe have little ones or you're looking to get out and do other things, then this would, this is a great place to come, meet your friends, meet new friends.
And it is fenced in already, yes.
That is, that is very helpful for little ones.
The fence itself, but the plan is to continue to have it fenced, completely fenced, yes.
I think we considered that in budget this morning.
Yes, yes, we did, yeah. So this is our proposed budget. Um, we are looking at building next summer. So we were, um, conscious of that when we were budgeting for, um, things like, um, building the, uh, the little building that's going, let me find that, there we go. The little building that's going to need to be beside it for, um, the mechanical pieces and an accessible washroom and all that stuff. We were conscious that building supplies could go off in the next year or so.
Yes, and it also gives us two years to plan for funding and grants and whatnot.
So obviously the, um, there's a little bit of pre-built expenses to get the site ready to go. Um, a little bit of site prep from the pad perspective. I don't see it anymore, sorry. Um, and, uh, then the, the big piece obviously is going to be the splash pad itself. Um, site restoration would include the fence and any landscaping that needed to be completed. Um, and then signage for the splash park itself, as well as a recognition sign for the sponsors and donors. So, um, this is our complete budget. We do plan to also ask for donations of service as well. So we may not get all checks in hand, but people donating time and service and building supplies also.
So the, the company that we went with, Vortex, does have the ability to come in and do everything start to finish, but we are able to reach out for.
They are willing to work with local people to come and, and do pieces if we have that availability. Um, so the funding, we are asking both town and municipality for thirty thousand dollars. Again, we are not building until next summer. So you would have the ability to split that over two budgets if you wish. Um, and then the rest of it, we are splitting between fundraising. Right, Melissa? And donations, um, and grants at the provincial and federal and, um, culture and heritage levels.
You got conversations yet or you're planning on conversations with?
Sorry.
And community cultures?
Um, I think we've touched base, but some of those grants we can't apply for yet because we're not building this year and you have to use it within the year kind of thing. So some grants we can apply for right away. Um, we were kind of waiting on our nonprofit number as well before we were able to apply for some of those things.
That just came last week.
Yes. So, um, yes, we, we have been in contact, but we can't, we couldn't apply and some of those we can't apply for till next year, so.
But we'll have them ready for next year.
Oh, yeah.
We know what they are and we're prepared to.
There are a number of COVID grants as well, like, um, to reinforce and, and spruce up the communities pre, post-COVID.
Post-COVID.
So, um, we're looking into some of those grants as well.
And we've been also had conversations with.
Yes, yes, that would be great.
And MLA for FB, so we reinforce how important it is.
And then go see Jill.
Yeah.
Perfect. Um, so we are looking for, um, support of the location at the Vaughn Van Hassel Memorial Park because that is within town limits. Um, we are looking for financial support and willingness to allow Digby Area Rec Commission to take over management of the splash park upon completion. We do realize that they are their own entity and make those decisions, but we also know they are funded through town and municipality and you guys have a say in what they do and do not take on, so.
Um, is, all right, is it, do they have to be monitored by, on a regular basis? Life guard versus that required yet?
No. So no, one of the really good things of post, um, especially from a community services standpoint, is that we don't need a lifeguard and the risk of drowning is very minimal because there's nothing that's gonna collect.
There's no pooling of water.
There's no pooling of water. So that's, um, something me and my boss of community services had a conversation about today, um, doing supervision with families in our communities that were in that, we never commissioned from social workers to do pools or anything like that, because there's just so much green tape with it, red tape with it. Um, but she said something like this, she was like, that would be so awesome because then our kids in the community who are under supervision, because that's what I do for my job, um, we wouldn't have a problem.
I'm just thinking from a Digby Recreation side, if they, if they had to throw personnel at an hourly basis, might be a challenge or something.
From the, from the Digby Recreation, I think the responsibility would be coming, uh, to turn it on at the beginning of the day and the shutting down at the end of the day. And the, uh.
General maintenance.
Yes, general maintenance. And if there's a washroom involved in our.
Yes.
A proposed washroom, then that would be under their jurisdiction as well.
Maybe ask the company whether they put that on a time or other than the time where it shuts off is non-active, but the time where it turns on it.
I think that is typically how it works.
I think that might be.
They, like they, it turns on, like it, it, you cannot like touch it to turn it on before, say, ten o'clock in the morning or whatever your time is. And then they would just have to go and check in the maintenance shed to make sure that everything is what it's supposed to be in pH almost.
I'm pretty sure they have a chemical chemicals too.
Yeah, yeah.
They have to be chemical chemicals.
pH and that kind of thing.
But that would be similar to what the lifeguards would do at the pools. They'd check the chemicals, so they would be already trained to do.
Sharon said that would, um, be absorbed into, like they wouldn't have to hire somebody extra to do those tasks.
They already have some.
It could be absorbed into current responsibilities.
It would be, Tom, Tom would have to, but it would be important from a town's perspective because you're using municipal water. So we want to make sure it's proper, the water coming over those taps.
Yes, yeah.
Tested, so somebody can't come back and say they got it wrong or something.
Right, that makes sense.
Anybody else got any questions?
We like questions, so.
Do you have any, um, costs, like from Berwick, or how much it costs to operate for a season? If you want us to take it over, I'm just wondering, like, do you know any costs?
Sharon had been looking into that because, um, I think with Berwick's kind of similar to our size, I think.
Berwick is about similar to what our proposed. We can find out the answer and get back to you.
I can just check with Sharon.
Yeah.
She's not.
She was like, yeah.
Yeah, that was something we brought up at the last meeting. Like what is, what is it going to take to maintain?
Yes, cost and load costs.
Yeah, yeah. Then, then, because that eventually ends up being a bigger cost overall. I see Yarmouth is well underway for their fundraising today.
Yes.
There's some nice corporate donations and things.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, generally, I think everybody supports it. It's something that we talked to them off and on for quite a few years. Uh, but we always get set in different directions, so.
We're gonna keep it moving. We have, we have a lot of support from the community as well.
Oh.
Um, we know several people ourselves, but also through our Facebook group. Um, there's, we have over eight hundred people ready and excited to help. And we started with a few fundraisers this past summer. I don't know if anybody was out and tried the, the, what is it called? The pull bar challenge, you have to pull your, your chin up challenge? Anybody try that this summer? That's it. So, uh, well, we'll have lots of fundraising coming up in the next.
And it was, it's nice to see that it's all accessible. We were hoping to pass our accessibility plan tonight.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Nice.
Yeah, so, and, and like I said, it's built in a location that the elementary school will be able to make use of it. Depending on when we, like if it opens in like mid-May or first of June, they'll have that, that warm season of June and September. Like it doesn't have to just be July and August because we know that it's pretty warm in September as well. And the same with the Conway Workshop that's down the road. Uh, Learning Grove is right there. And, uh, we've seen seniors come out to use it as well. So if there's local nursing homes that have accessible bus, they can come. Um, it gives the opportunity for, I don't know if any of the local daycare centers have connections with the seniors, that might be an activity that they could bring them together as well. Um, that's something I work in with my classroom, we try to work with local nursing homes. So that might be.
We'll say it's usually less cost to put it in a centralized area where there is water and all that stuff now, so. If not, if you were in a town, you'd be dealing with. And I'm sure with the, some of the programs in the summertime through dark.
Well, they make good use of the, the playground that's already there. And they do often go swimming, but if it's overlapping with something at the time they want to use it, then they would have that, uh, as another option as well.
Yeah, so it would be important to just keep everybody up to date, keep the excitement going.
Yes.
Email, MLA, email, EMP, Yarmouth, say this is where we're at. Eventually it'll just absorb it and tell you, I'm good on that, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you very much for putting up an agenda. And if you think of any questions, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, there's.
We're fine, yes.
Plus the infrastructure questions that come from Dom or.
Yeah, that's fine. I think Tom's been in touch with Sharon more than once.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's great to sit down.
So we're just gonna take a moment to set up for the next one. You're still with us, Will?
No, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We'll be able to see you after we're done these presentations. So, your word welcome's right up front. So we want to welcome you to our council chair, Mayor. Yes. File, something we've been working on for decades, seems like.
I have for one.
Yeah. Well, we had team title working on, they'd be working on the large upstream stuff, but Department of Energy says it'll be two thousand thirty before it's, you know, economical to put it in, so. We'll see. Anyway, so you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting us, for allowing us to come and do a presentation. I'll just briefly introduce the team and then leave the more important work to Bill here. But essentially, this is about an application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Funds, but a very particular, uh, part of that program, which is Signature Pilot Program. So after months of work on this particular project, we've made it to a Signature Pilot Project status, which just means a lot of extra work. The lead applicant and project manager is the CAO of the Town of Annapolis Royal. Bill is here as the technical, uh, manager. He's president of Saluna and I'll give you a bit of his background. We have Dr. Sue Malloy, adjunct professor of engineering down at University. It's our research person. Uh, we have Melody Robinson, MBA, CPA, CMA, Director of Finance for the Town. It's on for the, the financial part. And Jeff McKinnon, professional engineer for the engineering part. So Bill is here, he's the sole owner of Saluna Energy, Inc., which is based in the county of Annapolis. He's the inventor of the tidal energy technology that he'll describe. He's previously been awarded a United States Patent for Waste Energy Recovery Technology. He's a science graduate of Dalhousie University with study concentration in marine ecology. His work experience includes wind power site assessments in the Canadian Arctic while serving as manager of the Innovic Research Centre in the Northwest Territories. He's also led renewable energy development projects, uh, for example, for Western Valley Development Authority in Cornwall, Nova Scotia. So that's my brief introduction and I'll turn things over to Bill.
Thank you very much. Um, so, I guess the quickest way to get into it is, uh, the one thing that's most important of all is this thing on cost. The reason I am involved in this kind of a project is basically it comes out of a disappointment in the way tidal energy development has unfolded here. Um, and essentially, it's too big, too cumbersome, uh, too expensive. Uh, and it's dominated by international corporations who have a different incentive than people at the community level. And so I, I think what, uh, what we want to do is look at going back to basics and starting smaller. And so I looked at that as, as a starting point. And one of the things that you have to deal with right off the bat is this whole business of how the blades are, uh, used in the technology. So, uh, let's see. Uh let's see. It's a little tricky that far away, isn't it? I'm having trouble with the the most listening.
You don't need to main it for you?
Yeah, I guess it would be easier if you.
And you're an engineer?
Actually, I'm a biologist. But the interesting thing is I'm looking at it differently from a from an ecological perspective and trying to use the tides for what they really have to offer if you look at the whole thing, anyway. So the the issue here is um if you have a horizontal access turbine, it means that they're basically like wind turbines. And um they have a bladed head and there's a shaft that connects to the generator inside the housing. And so the axis is basically the line down the center of the shaft. And so and so what happens is um if you want to scale the thing up. Um the only way you can do it is to make the blades longer and longer and longer. And if you do that, then the um the tower has to get higher. And um you have to get into deeper and deeper water. See, if these blades go into the water and then come back out into the air, the change in density between the air and the water, which is eight hundred times different. Um will just destroy the blades over time. So you you have to be, it has to be completely submerged all the time. So if you're trying to scale it up by increasing the lengths of the blades. It means you have to keep getting into deeper and deeper water, which means you have to keep going further and further out from the shoreline. And so in minus passage, where they're doing most of the big machines, they're two kilometers offshore. Okay, and that means two kilometers of power cabling. Uh power cabling for these bigger machines, it's a million dollars a kilometer. For the cable and a million dollars a kilometer to install it. So you get all the, and then so you need ships, you need barges, you need commercial divers, all of these costs are adding up. And you wind up with an inordinate amount of cost per kilowatt hour that you're producing. So so the the idea is what can you do to get out of deep water? So if you could give me the next slide then, let's see. Yeah, and 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 so in some ways, the answer is obvious, we're fishermen, have known this for hundreds of years. It why not just take advantage of the tide itself, not not just the tidal current that's flowing as the tide. Rises and falls, but the actual fact that you can actually, if you put something at the low tide mark, you can actually watch that walk down the beach twice a day. To check in on your equipment, uh switch things out, make repairs, do uh make assessments, uh uh twice, it's twice a day. With the big machines, you, the last time one of the big ones packed it in was three years before they can get it up off the bottom. Um so 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 essentially, what we're saying is you take advantage of the tides, switch to a vertical access turbine. And then work on making the turbine more efficient, because the horizontal access turbines are very efficient. That's why they're popular, that's why they won the fight for wind. Uh but in water, it's a whole different kettle. Okay, uh next slide. Uh so what we did, we said, okay, let's start working on this with a few friends. And um we started looking for grants and we were fairly successful. Um we got uh close to forty thousand dollars over three years. Um two of them voucher programs from the province and one from IRAP and the Annapolis Investments and Rural Opportunities. And we did, we did testing at um, and we used Dalhousie University as the institution that would provide the expertise to help us. And we did engineering, uh we did testing at the engineering department at Memorial University of St. John's. Uh and then we also did testing in the Aquatron tank at Dalhousie. So uh let's go to the next slide. So here's an early drawing of the whole concept. Um basically, uh the top of it is a drive head with blades that that. Run laterally. And so instead of the, instead of it turning like into the current, it sits this way and the current spins this way. Uh now fortunately, when the current hits it, it hits both sides at the same time, so what you're gaining on this side, you're actually dragging and reducing on this side. And so the idea was, why don't we just make a deflector so that. Uh as the current's flowing, it'll, it won't have an opportunity to present drag on the offside. And all the power will go to the side that's that's working. And so if you have bearings that attach this cover to the shaft that's independent of the drive head. This and you put a rudder on her, this cover will switch at at the turn of the tide. And so on one, as tide's coming in, it might strike this side, and then as the tide goes out, it will strike these blades this way. And the net effect is that um if you're looking down on it, it will always turn clockwise in this configuration. But you could configure the blades the other way, so you could make it a counterclockwise turning turbine, which you'll see later is an opportunity to get even more power. Um so essentially, the rest, anything below the drive head is um off-the-shelf technology. So we just go to a generator inside a water housing, which sits in a concrete uh well-like base that's in the bottom of the ocean, and you cable the power to shore. And so essentially, it's all in, but you you have access twice daily, but you get all the same tidal current that even the big machines get. You're not losing anything, because the big machine loses power when the tide is slack anyway. Uh so next slide. Yeah, so so we made a prototype, and that's what this is, um these are stainless steel, they've been printed. Uh three D printer you see over on the left at the Community College in Dartmouth. Uh it starts off as just a pile of stainless steel powder, you just pick up in your hand and let it sift. Um but the computer drives a little laser uh point that's zapping the powder. And laying down little beads of molten stainless steel and just keeps going back and forth. And and it turned, uh it took them a night, usually a whole twenty-four hours to print one of the bigger ones. But anyway, it's um it's it, you know, it's 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 sound, it's been through all kinds of testing and. Um so uh we did testing at MUN, um maybe next slide. Yeah, this is a tow tank that we tested in, it uh what essentially the way it works is the water stays still, it doesn't move like a tidal current. But the carriage on the tank um runs down at a speed through the water, that's the equivalent of the tide flowing. And we got very good results there, we're quite pleased. Um and then we wanted to do further testing, and we went closer to home, and we went to the Dalhousie Aquatron uh tank, uh next slide. So this is technician installing this prototype on a gantry. And eventually be lowered into the tank, and that tank has massive pumps connected to it. And it can throw water in through an opening in one side of the tank, that is the equivalent of a tidal current. And we, and we got good power um uh production out of that in certain configurations. And so we have um we have three um engineering reports by Dr. Malloy, which are available. If um anyone would like to dig in a little further on on the outcomes. Most of the intellectual property that the company has to protect is tied up in the in the engineering reports. And and parts of the application that we have with FCM. Um lays out new things we want to do as uh new um alterations and new features we want to uh test out on the prototype. Um now the the prototype we're going to use will be, it'll be a meter in diameter, it'll be stainless steel, meter in diameter. Um with its cover on it, um it'll be much larger this than this, but um. What Dr. Malloy says is, you know, you can get a lot, you can get a lot of your findings out of small prototypes. But you can't just on paper uh scale them up uh to a bigger size and say how much power you're going to get, you still have to test it at its at its new size. Um so maybe next slide. Um and here's another um thing that a researcher at Stanford University test, wanted to test. Vertical access wind turbines to see if a vertical access has any advantage over a horizontal access wind turbine. But to, in order to get quick results, she decided to actually do it in water. So in a sense, she did an experiment for us. And um and what she found was that if you use vertical access turbines, you can pack them in together. So that they actually reinforce one another by spilling water off the uh deflector. Um so that it's caught by the the following turbine, which in turn spills to the next one and the next one. So you get, what she found was that you could pack, and where is it? If you were using wind turbines or a turbine that is horizontal access, it will destroy the downstream integrity of the water. So that you're actually losing power on the next one, instead of actually increasing it like this, so what she's saying is that. You can pack them in about ten times as many turbines of a vertical access design than if you went the other way. So this looks really well for if, you can just imagine ahead, if you had a number of um arrays on both sides of Digby Gut. Um you could just simply line them up at the low tide mark, and they would all reinforce one another. And and eventually you get too far over one way, but then you could replace them with turbines where the blades are actually counterclockwise. And then you could, so you could zigzag the the array of turbines down, so they would all be feeding one another. Um so there's real opportunities to find ways of making this design really efficient. Um and when you do that, you you can cut your costs so that you're competitive with with solar and wind. Um that's the next slide then. So here's, Em- Emery has uh mentioned the the signature initiative project. So it would be the same for any other municipality, if they want to get involved in the same kind of thing. I have to half a million dollars, eighty percent eligible as a grant, and the twenty percent uh your share. And next one. And then it, so if the pilot project is successful, then there in turn is a capital project where you can get low interest loans, five to ten million and gain eighty percent. And there's even a grant available on that loan that would forgive fifteen percent. So that would be the the steps we would be taking with this project. Um and the other, the other benefit that's important is that the uh North Scotia Utilities U-Board. Uh has mandated a program that will subsidize tidal power producers who are doing research. And they will pay, well, what they did was they asked the tidal powder power producers, what are your costs like? And they said, well, we would need to get fifty-three cents a kilowatt hour in order to cover our costs. Well, you know, solar is down now three or four cents a kilowatt hour, and wind's eight or ten cents or so. Um if you have a a utility that needs five times as much as wind, uh you're gonna be a long time getting the price down. Um so but but the good thing is that they've said, you have a technology you want to test, they'll give you this rate. Of everything you produce and up on the grid up for the fifteen years. So that's a huge amount of uh, I mean, it's so much money that nobody would pay that to buy it for their household, right? Um so anyway, uh just in a perfect situation. Um with everything going right, if you had a ten turbine array of fifty-kilometer generators, you would yield million and a half dollars a year in uh in gross profit. I mean, there's, it's like paper fish, you don't really want to count them, but um.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need the utilities board to be really on side with renewable energy to to make progress. And then uh this is uh uh sort of a model of how to do it. Um Annie Ganesh Berwick-Mohammed, they are the owners of the Ellerhouse Wind Farm, you'll see it on the highway when you come in, in Windsor from Halifax. Um and and it it seems to me that um this would be a beautiful, if everything worked out, this was a great, would be a great opportunity for, say. Annapolis and Dignity, both the counties and and the towns. Um to perhaps form a similar kind of cooperative. Uh and next slide. And then, yeah, so the reason the tidal power plant in Annapolis Royal got into so much trouble was because fish kill primarily, I think. And the sort of social license was kind of violated. What we're proposing here are turbines that are in open free water, where marine mammals and fish have ample opportunity to to avoid the turbines. What you have in the tidal power plant is there's no choice but to go through that turbine. And that's why people, and I've seen it myself, see chunks of sturgeon floating below the below the power. So this design is, has some uh environmental benefits in that. The blades always run with the current, and the blades that aren't running with the current are covered by a deflector. And because you have access to it twice a day, uh you have opportunities to react quickly if you're having problems, but even shut them down, you know immediately. Also, we uh submitted a description of the project to the Department of Fisheries and Oceans. Now I have a letter from them saying they find that there is, that there would be no uh threat to endangered species in this area if we were to do the testing, so.
So convince the fishing, because they were quite a.
Yes.
They weren't happy with the ones off of Black Rock.
Yes.
Quite a lot of fundraising from the community to to suspend those over the years.
Yes, and and we would have to, we would have to make sure we had the fishing industry on side. Um you see, the thing is, I'm hoping is that by by being in shallow water, we'll be within about fifty yards of the shore. Um and. Some of the fishermen have told me that their their insurance is actually not in is is in, I guess. In question if they go in too close to shore, right? Um so I'm hoping that the area we want to operate in is an area that fishermen and marine traffic will avoid anyway. I don't, I don't see them going into the intertidal zone, except in maybe an emergency.
That's in the river?
In the channel, in say Digby Gut.
Digby Gut?
How close, how close would you want to go to the shore in a vessel in Digby Gut?
Uh they they go close enough, sometimes they rub the rocks.
Yeah.
When when that's too close, but I do know the last few years, there've been some of the liches out there.
Yeah.
And they do go into the uh the pools there when the tide's at that end, they'll come quite close to shore.
Yeah, okay, so.
Thanks to consider.
Yeah, we will have to have to handle that, deal with that. Um at any rate, we're leaving the main channel, we're not interested in the main channel, we're just interested in the edge of the channel.
There is a lease, it's uh still exists on part of that channel. With uh it was a, they're chasing it now, but they did lease a lot, is the lease the. Access for North Scotia Power to bring the power to shore.
Okay.
Now I can check with Derek Thibodeau to see if that still exists, might show up sometimes.
The the property we're looking at is um the Coast Guard property at Victoria Beach, uh just below the lighthouse.
Yes.
Yeah, and it has a water lot attached to it, and they said, you know, we have to meet certain. And they said, you know, we have to meet certain conditions. Um, but they said that they would allow the project to go ahead there. We could use their property um long enough to do the testing.
So there you'd have to convince the bishops because.
Yeah, they're right there.
They put their traps right there. I I sometimes I'm down there and I call into the guys on the boat, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, and so the only other, I think, thing is the tidal power plant itself, which, you know, if if they could ever figure out what they're going to do with it and uh but um, for us, the timeline on that is just out of the question. Um, we'll have to let that unfold as it will, but over time, it might be that that causeway could have more openings in it. And you could have a free flowing uh technology like this at work there that would not have the same kind of environmental impact. And I think next slide, and I think that's it. So so basically, we we hope that the outcomes, we've got something that's a manageable scale. There's financial support, both with grants and the feed-in tariff, giving you a guaranteed revenue. And hopefully you wind up with a community asset that's doing something for climate change.
It's six meters a second, I got, so you think whatever size you put in there, the number of stand up to that? Um, you know, that's, we've looked at over the years with tidal, it's, it can be as high as six meters a second.
Yeah, and well, it it's about the fourth highest in in the province. Like the testing they're doing at minus passage, of course, is much higher. Um, so and you know, we can sort of look to see what's getting destroyed out there. And um, work from there, but um, no, that'll be part of the testing. It might be that, you know, my uh uh sort of an elegant fragile one looking like that may not stand up. It may be that it would have to be far more robust.
Any questions or with the volume change storms? How do they, how would it affect that?
Yeah, I I think what you would have to do is, I've been sort of thinking along those lines too. There would be a period just be, just as the tide is reaching low tide, when it would be exposed. And any debris or ice or whatever, uh that would be uh the time of greatest danger. Um, and that would be hit and miss, but um eventually you would get whacked. Uh, so it may be that uh there might only be certain places that are shit, uh sort of shielded from veiling winds and so on. That would be the ideal sites to locate these. Um, in a pinch, you could cage them with some sort of protective cover. Um, or and or you could make the blades detachable that it could be quickly be replaced. Uh, and as a last result, if there was damage that couldn't be repaired quickly, you could take a machine down the beach and pick it up and bring it up and and replace it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, so you even know that the, at the Digby Gut, you'd want these to end up being exposed twice a day?
Yes, they would be exposed twice a day.
It doesn't drop real far in the life saving station, but just north of that, when it's low tide, you can almost walk to the middle of the gut.
Yeah.
It's kind of an eerie feeling getting it there. But it's huge, huge, bold as I walked it.
Yeah, I blocked the one that Victoria Beach too. Um, I I'm not, I'm not sure, of course, that's what we'll learn, you know, we'll learn by making mistakes probably. Um, but uh the closer to shore, the cheaper it is to operate. Uh, the cabling is shorter and then um the interference with marine traffic is less. My, at this point, I think the best thing to do is say as close to shore as possible.
Can you turn it this way and put it in wastewater pipes and stuff? No, they're they're doing that.
Oh, yeah, there are all kinds of other, um, I mean, it's not, it, all it is is a water current.
Yeah.
Turbine, it can be put in rivers, like um, there are all kinds of communities on northern rivers. Um, because the fur trade mandated that the communities would have to be on rivers. Where it's just simply too shallow to put in turbines like the the big ones. You know, the the rivers are only, you know, 10 or 15 feet deep or places. But you could always put uh a vertical access turbine of some size in there. Uh, so there are all kinds of uh opportunities for.
So any asked tonight or just gonna keep us uh as you move along?
Well, it's a catch 22, so we had submitted a low carbon application for the 20% that we didn't have. And we were disappointed in that, we thought we, you know, went to their technical review team, but it didn't make it. But it made it through the FCM technical team. So now they're interested and this is our third application, the same application, we've been at this for months with FCM. So uh what they need is the provincial share, and then the municipal share has to be at least 10%. Our council decided that they would go ahead, so they pledged 22,333, which is a third of the the remaining amount we have to find. So the total project's coming at 335,000. We need to put up, find 67,000 and the town has just put up a third of that. And we, there's another municipal partner we're talking to. So we've talked to everybody, we pitched it to every unit in Kings County, Annapolis County. We talked to Digby, but they were already, they had other, to the, sorry, the district of Digby, they were already tied up. So we're down to the wire and you don't know which comes first. They knew we'd put in the low carbon application, then we told them, well, you know, that that didn't, that didn't go through. So now we're, it's plan B. And this project is supposed to start the pilot phase on April 1st, so we're under the gun to probably put the money together to make it happen. Yeah, so that's where we are, catch 22.
Yeah, yeah, that's tough, that short period of time is tough for us, but what I would suggest is you put that all together on paper and set it in. To us to see how that moves and stuff.
We'll certainly do that, yeah.
Time, like I said, tidal was something we've been working on a long time, but we were promoting the the big tidal because Digby was chosen as the service board for that industry, but never did take off. The number of studies showed that Digby is the most logical place to service the, you know, because we're the only wet point on the North Coast society, so.
I have your map of the promotional map of part of Digby with all the reasons why it's.
Yeah, yeah, we produced those quite a few years ago. But it's been quiet, it's, you know, with the failures at up there and the problem's not really got over to step in yet. This cost of producing power.
Well, you know, and you have to start somewhere. Some years ago, I went to a wind turbine conference and Vestas had sent their sales rep to to speak. And he told the story about how Vestas got started. And he said they, they used to be a machine, a farm machinery manufacturer, and they tried to make a battery um charger, a wind powered battery charger to sell to farmers, and they couldn't sell it. And finally, they found one farmer who said, okay, I'll take one, but you have to throw in a farm cart. So they had to, they had to, had to give them a piece of farm machinery to take the wind charger. It was on something, was bigger than, not much bigger than this. And and now Vestas um has something like 60% of all the wind turbine sales in the world. They make wind turbines that are a million watts and over. Um, and it all started with a little battery charge. So.
Yeah, you can have.
Digby may still become a important port for tidal.
Okay, any other questions from anybody? And not so just any of those, those details sent in to us and.
We'll do that.
Yeah. Wish you success.
Thank you.
We've been working on it here for all the time, as we've been trying to increase the impasse for the last few years, it's not much happening. And we got this water all around us, it moves all the time, so.
It's hard to imagine it all going to waste.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Thanks very much.
We'll just give you a moment to break it down before we.
Thanks for your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that fair bird?
No, we have not.
Uh, actually, I prefer not to see it. Our other council is on the screen now, so. Okay, so we'll move on, uh, the minutes of the previous meeting, January the 17th. Everybody's had a chance to go through those? Any errors or amendments? Is that motion approved? No, and also purple. Any discussion? None? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it is. Okay, Mrs. Horizon, draft accessibility plan. That went out, everybody, I'm sure everybody wrote that in detail.
Cover to cover.
Cover to cover, yeah, yeah. So we're hoping if we can move this along tonight, because you need it passed by with.
Mark 31st.
So we don't have a lot of documents, so.
They're missing out to get it through, they're just waiting for it to get to town.
For us? Well, let's, let's discuss this in June. Well, they really do wish. Well, we need to take a motion, motion there, take a thousand for approval, so. If you haven't finished reading the document, then.
Yeah, anybody has any concerns about anything?
Yeah.
Like to hear or not?
Yeah. Okay, it doesn't look like it's too much going on, so if someone wants to put a motion to take this forward to council?
Uh, like to make a motion that we take it to council.
All right, second, second that? So a lot of people worked on it, you, Derek, Leslie, I think was the one, yeah? All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any days, no? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do go to work here, guys. CEO report. Okay, planning permits. That's what we did, this one development permit issued, and that was for the four unit department buildings on Second Avenue. And the building department also issued a building permit for the same building. So they're, they're all permitted and I've seen that it was instructional services, weather permits. For the time, yes. Fire department, I have no report, is there?
Is that meeting that's set for to be held?
In the meeting, at this particular time, I mean, it's trying to set something up. He wants to be honest for a bit, so. We gotta wait for Willie to get better, and Will's gonna get better.
I'll be back next meeting.
Hey, we should change that video, healthy people.
No, I just thought that may help communication a bit too.
Yeah, yeah, it will, I'll see you around. Office of the C A L, 85 Church Street, so uh correspondence from Churchill Oxford, a lending service water is being directed from the town and property, community gardens on his property next door. And so he's put forward a proposal for correcting the same, so that is gonna be tabled to the in camera agenda later. Back sale, back sale, a tender will be held on March 1st, 2022. The tenders close at noon, currently you have two properties listed, 60 Queen Street and 10 Talbot Street.
They stole both of them?
Fire is like, no.
Yeah.
Get a chance to ask today or the anxiety is in the. And Digby Kent Ground Land, the survey is commenced and we expect the timeline is March 31st, 2022, to have a final subdivision plan submitted. So. That's. Any, any comments or questions for the C A L? Let's see about 100 building projects here. Okay, Director of Finance.
Oh, the works report is the first, like, from the, from the month?
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, okay, yeah, everybody looked at the uh all the works, he's not here tonight, he's uh I think he's a leaf fan because he's in isolation tonight. He's using some other excuse for, yeah, one win will do a lot for you guys. Yep, no idea. Any questions, if any, Tom can answer on that?
Anything wrong with the five ton? Doesn't, doesn't look?
The five ton, oh, that worked beautiful.
Oh, okay.
I guess, I don't know, nothing's on the road. It's on, it's on the road.
So we made it a whole month and it's, it's working.
Yeah, well, it seems to be, he didn't have any getting in his report and he didn't usually then and lets me know what he's gonna spend more money on, so. Yeah, there's the question with the pumping at the, with the pumping station at the rack, is that because it was overwhelmed and it wasn't working? Or she ordered coming up from the super animal that just. The day that the storm.
Really heavy rain, yeah.
Yeah, basically, yeah, there was a, was an issue with the, with the pumps. And uh, then it was compounded by the uh, by the uh, power outage.
Yes.
And then was further complicated by the season rain, because we couldn't get uh the pumpers in, the pumpers couldn't, couldn't begin to use our, our north, north, so. But everything was, everything was reported as, as true. It's still it, and everything, forget it. And uh, but uh, yeah, I think it was a comedy of errors. Yeah, that, you know, just things happen, Murphy's Law happened and uh everything started, once it started, it just domino effect, so. Yeah, but you usually uh, you know, pumps, we have that leaves one person questioning that the pumps aren't big enough. But that's not, not, not the case as a matter of them. Other thing is, I mean, there was a lot of rain.
Oh, a lot of rain.
And still have a lot of stormwater intrusion into our wastewater system, so. And uh, we may have to go back, sort of, let that for a bit, but we may have to go back and try to find our worst culprits in that end of town and uh and see if we can get some of it separated. Is there that one die or something, or? And we can, we can basically tell you, yeah, you know, some of the drains would die and see if we can, in the manhole.
Yeah.
Wastewater manhole, if that's, and that, we're, we're, yeah. This, they used to do all the time. Okay, any other questions? Done the part of finance.
So the statement of operations is attached. Uh, the main thing to take away is it looks like we're going to have a, an operating budget surplus by the end of the year. Could even be a little larger than than normal. Um, and that's primarily because the municipal financial capacity grant, formerly equalization, is double this year. So that's an extra 365,000 uh straight into the, the operating budget. And the tank transfer tax revenue will be over, well over $100,000 more than. And the tent transfer tax revenue will be over, well, over one hundred thousand dollars more than expected. I know I keep reporting that each month, but each month, it surprises me again how, how large it is. Keep on expecting it to sort of wind down a bit, but it seems to be going at the same pace. Fuel costs up significantly, and I think everybody knows what the prices of pumps have been doing. And I've been into U A R B site just to get some comparisons there, and up forty-three percent from April first to now, just for diesel. And road salt expenses is higher than normal for this time of year, so we're up to about three thousand dollars. I know a little further down, I reported twenty-nine thousand dollars, but thirty-two thousand is the, is the correct number, includes all the purposes up to, up to the end of the month. E-transfers, according to new policy, we accept e-transfers for, for certain items, and that is up and working. It's been tried at least once, that I'm aware of, and no problems. There is a federal active transportation fund, the.
Just back to the transfers, you've got their local use for water or tax bills, but that's what council wanted to have.
Not, not for e-transfers, what we're looking for for water and tax bills is pre-authorized debits. E, e-trans.
Yeah, I know what they all are, but some do do e-transfers instead of paying them online. What about?
I don't think we've ever talked about that, e-transfers for water and taxes.
Where does e-transfer tax and things like that?
It, it can be used for, it's, it wasn't nailed down specifically in the accepted payment method policy, so it's left open. I mean, we can do case by case, the C E O can decide, the standard operating procedure. It's open right now.
Well, I just, especially with e-transfer, most of the things, there's a deal going down in hurry, they need to really talk, especially.
With e-transfer tax doesn't flow through us anymore, any of that, that's the lawyer. But something like the, an R C M P criminal record check, right now it's very awkward, somebody has to come here, pay for it, get a piece of paper, walk up to the R C M P station. And get that done. They can simply e-transfer us the money, we email the receipt to the R C M P, and they have one stop.
So why wouldn't that work for water and tax bills?
So water and tax bills, I've brought this up a few times, several times, and we've talked about this in management meetings, and, and in here as well. Water and tax bills, we have a hard enough time getting people to give us the correct information, so that we can apply all of those amounts of money coming in to the correct bill. So when you take a thousand water bills, and all of those coming in. With a bill payment system, you're forced to put in an eight-digit number, you're forced to put in something that we can relate to when we get it here. Because the name of the person sending it doesn't match the name on the account a lot of time. So bill payment systems, I think you'll see almost all municipalies doing it through a bill payment. Process through a bill like Chase, or was it Chase Payment App? If that was opened up to e-transfers, we could get an e-transfer from Fred Smith for four hundred and sixty-four dollars, and that's all it says. We, we don't have a Fred Smith on our, we'll say we can have a Fred Smith, that example. For the water account, we don't know where to put that money, so now we're chasing down that email, who are you, what do you want this applied to? Is this your tax bill, is this your water bill? So, so that's why a lot.
But when you e-transfer, you, you get a code, so couldn't you put Mike Bartlett, one forty-six W water?
You could put that, but there's nothing forcing you, there's nothing structured forcing Mike Bartlett to put anything now.
Because I know when, when my wife does e-transfers for one man's junk and stuff like that, when she does it through my bank account, it comes up who it was sent to. And everything, so there's gotta be a receipt that, Mike Bartlett got a receipt for one forty-six water.
No, we, we won't know your address, all we'll know is the email, in fact, we may not even know your name if you don't put the name on it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, can't you set it up so that it's?
I mean, not e-transfers, no.
Well, I mean, transfer companies. I know the, the code you give is, is confirming that. That's, that's a bank.
The bank will send you a code saying, yes, you sent the money, it has gone.
But I have paid large firms by e-transfer, and some don't say they'll do it by e-transfer, but maybe they will. But maybe they get to, because I think everything that we get, every request that I get, I tell them, yes, you go online, set it up, I have D B Y utilities, I have. Tax there, but I get a lot of requests, how come I can't do e-transfer, because I don't do the other.
Because debit's on those, that's saying that compared to e-transfer. Like the non-imaginable.
Well, yeah, e-transfer. And, and the other payment through your. If you had a, a number for, an e-transfer number for your water bill, and another number for your, your taxes. And once, once it's, once it's set up.
But there is nothing to set up, it's just an email.
Yeah, I just said, you just sent me the Director of Finance, D B dot C A.
Yeah, they're going to e-transfer at D B dot C A. So anybody can send any amount of money to that. And we, we can, I, I'm just trying to find if anybody else does this. And we can't find any online right, right at the moment.
We just dig into it more, because that's what, that's what I get, it's, can I do an e-transfer, now sometimes it might be saying, mixing it up with bill payments set up on.
Yeah, Tommy, maybe you can add it too, as we've talked about it in our management meetings a fair bit, and.
I do. I write one check a year, now, everything is by bill payment online or e-transfer.
Well, the pre-authorized debit for, for bills is very common, we're still in testing, we still had another problem, and had to get the software vendor involved. But that one, I don't give up faith, I think that one, we will get one, people do want pre-authorized debit. So right now, they have the ability to go online, pay their water bill, and the pre-authorized debit is what we're working on. The e-transfer, even if we did add it, is just another option to go online and pay it, when they already have the option to go online and pay it.
Through their, yeah, they set it up as bill payment.
Through the bill payment, yeah.
Well, keep looking.
But when we talked about e-sorting, but when we talked about e-transfer, didn't we talk about a form that people would fill out, like you'd have to include these things?
No, not for e-transfers.
No, because it's, it's e-transfer, you just set up an email.
Wide open, you just, it's just me.
But we're supplying them the access, right? Like, they're not just gonna pull out of the air.
We're just saying, send money to e-transfer at D B dot C A. That's it.
But.
But it's, so I'm putting a nice.
If you can't, if, you couldn't send money to, and please, or your, because you can put your account number in there.
Well, you can write anything you want in the email.
But you don't have to accept it either, you don't have to go.
And then how do you send the money back?
You don't accept it, it goes back, it goes back.
Hours go automatically into our bank account, because we don't want people to have the ability to direct that money, we want it directly into our bank account. We don't want Dan to have the option of what to do with the money, or me to have the option of what to do with the money.
So e-transfer is automatically going in your bank account, or are you talking about bill payment?
E-transfer, e-transfer can be set up either way, so that you can get the, Matthew can get the e-transfer, but I can put it in this account, this account, or this account. We don't want that sound to be.
No, no, you need time control.
I don't want the discretion to put it in that bank account where it sounds.
So, okay, well, we just, that's where the requests come from, so.
So how would you know it's a criminal record check if you're getting e-transfer? If I email, email your.
Because it happens infrequently, and we would be in discussion with them on the telephone, saying, okay, you can do it as a criminal record check, put this on your information. That'd be a one-to-one conversation, and very easy to do, it's not a thousand bills going out each two months, where we don't have any interaction with them, right? When you're being polite on the water bill, if e-transfer, please include this number, and yes, some organizations do that. But for these large volume ones, like.
So someone that, if they want to pay their water bill at e-transfer, I could call you and say, Matthew, I've got an e-transfer, you sent me my water bill.
If, well, I talked to Tom.
If you're on the way, and it's gonna be late, you're gonna turn my water off.
Well, right, yeah, probably what I would do is say, Tom, we want to accept this one. And Tom would say, yes, we can, because our policy has left it. Just let me bring that policy up and see if it doesn't facilitate it, exclude water payments and bill payments.
We just want to make this as possible, so, on both sides, here and in the public, so.
I think the younger generation will pay more e-transfers than a, set a debit account or a bill, bill payment account.
I had somebody ask me, I was in the lineup, it's important, like, he said, do you guys take e-transfer for your water bill, and I'm like, why did they get spot booked in that?
Yeah.
But we've never, we've never talked about that, the only conversation we've ever had in management meetings or here, it's been specifically, water bills and tax bills would be excluded.
Now, you could tell something like that, set it up under bill pay.
She wanted to pay like multiple, like she, it was the compound thing, but it was. So it would be like a whole.
All the. Yeah, that, that would be complicated, but.
So, so you don't think any municipalies do it right now?
Well, I, I just had a very brief, so I don't know. But it's un, it's unlikely, a lot of them have a website you can go to and pay, or they have bill payments where you went to your own bank account, that's, that's the norm.
Yeah, a lot of the places that I've ordered, take over the two different places in town, and I pay on, pay from, at their website.
Yeah, on their website is one.
Paid, it's paid, you just wanna pay.
And that's actually tagged your order, so that's very, then, then they have no, oh, we got an e-transfer from this person, we've been ordered for fish and chips over here, how do we match? They're, they're matched together.
Well, just do some digging and look at it, just, you know. But some of the, most, if someone gets a guy to do an e-transfer, I'd say, would online set up as, town of D B is a bill pay, a pay.
Yeah, as a, as a norm, that's, that's the norm, and like you say, if that exception came up, I'd go to Tom, say, Tom, do we want to accept it in this case? And like you say, water's gonna be turned off, or give me an e-transfer, that, there's an exception, there's a good reason.
But you got real estate sales and things going on. And permits that need to be issued and all that.
Development permits are, are one we've talked about, that's a great idea, because that's, that's easy, there's a one-on-one conversation, good discussion. It's not gonna come in with a flood of water bill payments to Dan, who's trying to match them to the accounts.
Are most government buildings in town? One landlord, like Mike Tan, or is it Mike Bartlett in apartment ten?
No, most of them, the small ones are, well, even the large ones, are usually one water.
Yeah, we made that decision.
Yeah, duplexes are two, the two independent services.
But there's no one out there that's doing anything separate anywhere?
I don't know, Tom, are you aware of any multi-unit buildings with multiple sand pipes, multiple meters? It's not common.
Not Lyretrons, there's like duplexes and stuff. It's two separate, that's, that's two separate. Even, even now with our new policy, once, if it's in a tenant's name, once that tenant moves out and closes their account, or it gets closed for non-payment. Then it has to go into the landlord's name, the owner, not the owner's name. Okay, well, move on, Matthew. Flavrisic.
Sorry, Google search and switch and find that quickly, yeah, some may, some may do. Okay. And I did bring up the accepted payment method, and it's very vague on purpose, we will, we'll look at that way, so let me get back to my reports. Okay, so. Federal active transportation fund applications just opened up, they close March thirty-first. And they can do either one hundred percent of costs, up to fifty thousand dollars for a planning project. Or sixty percent of costs, up to fifty million dollars for capital projects.
There you go, streetscape side program, splash parks.
There you go. I don't, well, after transportation, I guess, as long as they keep walking through the park, to the water park and continue. What had been discussed at the, the management, the meeting. Was that we're in a position, it seemed to lean toward, well, I think it's even in the minutes of the management. Meeting that planning project would be a good option for this year coming up, one hundred percent funded, up to fifty thousand. Could be an outside consultant saying, you know. Maybe they would do a public forum, maybe they would come up with ideas, which, where's your best bang for your buck? Do you want to connect your route through town, is that your best bang for your buck? Do you want to link tie you with proper sidewalks on the way down, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out, things that maybe we haven't even thought of. How do you connect bicycles better from the pines into town, where you'd see more bicycle traffic? But it would, it would identify all of these items, put some basic costs on those items, so that then when the grants come out, or capital projects. We have the costing done, and we can say, yes, here's the application, it's gonna identify in our. And our planning documents is being a priority to expand our active transportation this way. And that was, that was the thinking at the, the management meeting, but of course, it's all open to whatever council would like.
Yeah, if we get money for planning, but we don't do any capital this year. I guess the rest of it, is there gonna be fifty million dollars next year? Because this, you say this fifty million for capital projects, is that end at March thirty-first?
The applications for that one end at March thirty-first, there's often provincial active transportation money available from year to year.
Well, no, what I'm saying, we apply for fifty thousand dollars for planning, out of this, this, and get it. But we're not gonna do any capital this year, or we may, we may decide on a capital.
Yeah, the capital, usually Ed will talk with Tom and, and, and look at what's specific.
But we get sixty percent of our capital, but you're saying that expires at March thirty-first.
Applications have to be in by March thirty-first, you can't. Late.
Late, yeah, it's not, yeah, not.
And the main things to have, we've seen run into this each year, that the main thing is to have the costing done, so that when these tight window applications come up, that. We can say, hey, we have our homework done, we want to do this for them.
I would say with the prospect of hiring somebody to bring that up. Job and application up for the community person for this, then maybe the planning's the way to go this year, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I agree, we gotta have this, this shovel ready project, we gotta have ready, yeah, so the planning's gonna be up, yeah.
Yeah, this is the time of year when everything comes to a head, right? That's not.
And that doesn't require that, I didn't see anywhere in the application process that it requires council to identify it as a priority project. But it wouldn't hurt to have something in the record that, that council is.
Well, that's, that's tough to do tonight, set priorities on capital. We, we identified so many of that. So you, you're, you're looking for. A motion to put this application work for, for planning, or?
It doesn't have to, it wasn't specifically asked for, it's up to council, what they want you.
Well, I thought, well, it's catch twenty-two, get the fifty thousand for planning, because we need to do that, like, build something right away too.
I think it's sort of a chicken and egg, it, it probably makes sense to go for the fifty thousand dollars for the planning, and that way, even if it's not next year, if it's five years down the road. At least we've got something that's put together that we can, that we can work with more solidly in the, in the future. So if it's.
We'll be redoing our planning, so. That's the thing too. Anyway, well, the management thinks that that's the priority right now as far as planning, but.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie and Tom, that's, that was a recollection from the meeting, correct me if I'm.
Need to do that.
That's probably you.
I think basically what we, we're talking. I think basically what we were talking about, if we're going to apply for any funding, we can just try to get a plan put together.
Yeah.
Then, uh, you, you do something. So especially if you get a hundred percent funding, you know, a plan.
Yeah.
Is, uh, that's up to fifty thousand.
Yeah.
You don't know what. Yeah, you know, it's not, it's, yeah, yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. Just, we need to start digging dirt somewhere. We need to start digging holes somewhere. So anyways, okay, we'll get the application. I guess that's general field is getting planning done, fifty thousand.
Hey, I think flood risk and structure investment program grant for the racket road project. Um, we expect to receive ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars on that project and the total cost, uh, minimum two hundred forty-two thousand dollars. The MFC borrowing, uh, which you'll see on the next page or the, I guess, the capital projects cost to the number of items that we haven't bought, purchased, and we got, uh, an extra bonus amount of gas tax funding this year, a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars extra. So, uh, what we try to do in years like this, it's not moral. We, there's, we still have adequate reserves. Need any, uh, any of our policies adequate reserves, uh, that we don't place us in, uh, in a bad situation. We'll still have green in the FCI's when the province says their report card. Um, so, uh, recommend that we simply use the extra gas tax, uh, for those projects that were previously identified as, uh, to be, be moral for. Two of them specifically being, two of the largest being the racket program, Ross, a hundred twenty thousand. Uh, we're going for, we budgeted for, and principally we're servicing eighty-six thousand, uh, we budgeted to borrow for.
Did, did we discuss this at council or did you and I discuss?
Yeah.
We did, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. Yeah, we approved, yeah, we approved. Yeah, yeah, same.
Yeah, and this is in Tom's reports.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, so again, the active transportation grant webinar, it's regarding the grant we talked about. And your authorized debit payments for water and sewer bills data testing is progressing well. That was up till last week when we had another, uh, problem that had to involve the software, uh, provider. Uh, but, uh, don't give up. I think we can still get it going. We want it, the public wants it. Um, it's, uh, uh, I wish our software would, would deal with it a little easier. And that's most of the reports, the.
Back to the fuel costs. We're ready for a new half ton in five, six, seven, eight, ten years. We go higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's a business, like I ended up putting the operating fund statement of operations in there, but basically highlighted and.
So I was, I was hoping we'd be first, but Bridgewater went through Tesla, please correct me. I was suggesting we give our protective service officer electric smart car.
There you go.
There you go. Have you seen this?
That'd be a truck for him, wouldn't it? Well, he gets a smart car.
Yeah.
Scooter, little cherry home.
That's what they are.
So the next report is a capital budget statement, just to give us a little up to date, uh, it's, uh, I was hoping, uh, Ed, Director Public Works would be here, but unfortunately he can't because he could give you much better answers, uh, on those items than, than I could. Uh, but, uh, willing to try to answer some if there's questions.
Do you have any questions on that? If you have tonight, then we can, we should bring one next time. It's a wonder how losing to the Canadians really. Yeah, no other questions for the director of finance?
What's our COVID fund? When do we need to spend that or is there anything we can spend it on or what's going on with COVID money?
Well, it's the same spending criteria, uh, that we've looked at a number of times. Um, that hasn't changed. And, uh, there's a significant balance left. I don't have the number right in front of me. We got two hundred sixty-four thousand. I, I'm sure we spent less than a hundred thousand. I, I don't know the exact number. But well under a hundred thousand that we spent. There's a lot of money sitting there.
So are they extending that another year like they did like the lunch businesses or?
Issue is we don't know. Uh, right now we have it set up as a liability on books because we don't know if they're going to ask, ask back the, or any of the excess.
We'll have to ask what other communities have done with the COVID related, probably what they did, yeah.
On the list serve, we asked. Um, some of them said, oh, you, you put in, uh, uh, hands-free touch dispensers and water taps that are, which we've ordered. They know that was a great idea, but, uh, we didn't get any ideas from them, but they, they got our ideas.
Smash pants, that's mentally, they said.
Well, it's, yeah, we'll have to look into that because we don't, you know, that's why you're.
But, yeah, it is, it's certainly a shame to have it sitting there and, and not knowing when the axe might fall and, and then say, okay, we haven't spent a lot of this state.
Yeah, we want.
We want it back. We don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we should find out what's been spent on.
Imagine if the feds, I would ask for it back, it's a third money.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. But it'd be interesting to see, like, it's gotta be something.
Yeah, because COVID is not just hand washing stations. It's all wrapped around mental health and all kinds of stuff, so. So there's gonna be something.
You gotta be something.
We'll find some.
Yeah. Even a navigator, like, we put some money, where's that navigator? I mean.
To design COVID things.
No, no, but.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, we do need doctors and.
Mental health for the kids is up to your own.
Right, they've been all cooped up for two years.
Yes.
You know, like, why would we spend that thirty thousand and want on that? Right?
Well, that's fine to.
Yeah. We can, we can ask some questions. Um, capital items are specifically excluded, so.
Yeah, isn't, so you're in order to handle some sections that's capitalized.
Yeah, not necessarily. We're just repairing any of our.
Well, okay, that's what they were all broken? Yeah, okay. Well. But, but you see, cap, capital, there is a certain threshold called capitals.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and it's kind of an arbitrary thing. For us arbitrarily, we've set three thousand dollars as our capital threshold. We don't capitalize anything.
What about, uh, uh, things like HEPA filters? Because they put them all in schools and stuff. Well, that's, that's. Okay, I guess, yeah, that could be picked up, that kind of stuff. Proper ventilation.
Generator.
Generator run HEPA filters because of the fires.
Exactly. And it's a, and it's a EMO center.
Yeah. There we go. Same, we need to talk about.
If you gotta pay a generator back fifty, yeah, I mean, your modules.
We're gonna have to.
You need, if you need one, your modules can spend the money on it.
Exactly.
Right?
Okay, moving on to, always the highlight of the evening, something special.
It's only a waker thing.
Well, that's okay. That's good then.
Yeah.
Danger, so that's another premise report for the month of January. Ten Carlin Street, building still secure. Has the date of for the repairs have been done and still monitoring the premise. Apparently it's up for tax sale, so.
Yep.
Just wait and see.
Yeah, they change it.
Uh, two sixty-seven Shore Road, uh, I'm still waiting for a window of opportunity to go in with big salvage through the incline weather that we had past month. Rain, snow, rain, snow. Hopefully, that'll be done very soon, just talk by May.
Thanks. I drive down Shore, maybe we work, we're coming down. It's also popular there.
Is that property for sale? Somebody told me that twice.
Uh, I was told it was listed.
It is listed.
Yeah, but still, we still have that because it could sit there for the next ten years.
Exactly.
It might because of the weather.
Kind of kicked a hornet's nest over when I talked with Mr. Tan last Thursday.
Yeah.
So, none of that properties, two other properties that are in residential areas that have a lot of lumber, buildings and lots. So, I had a discussion.
Oh, people walk the town.
Yeah.
That's the biggest complaint that is, is get. Not just that, I waters others too.
No, no, exactly. Exactly. I'm, I'm expecting to get busy, so.
Should be mine.
It's like your auto lock.
No, the auto lock. Okay, protective services.
Protective services report for the month of January. Uh, the only change I get on here is, uh, under dog control. Uh, there was a red-nosed pit bull by the name of Nova, surrendered to the town. The owner, who lives at thirty-seven Queen Street, was unable to keep the dog due to health reasons and had some, had become too much for her family. Uh, the owner had tried to find a home for the young dog, but no prevail. Nova, the year and a half old female pit bull, has been since spayed it and rehomed in the Halifax area. So, it was a good turn. Yeah. That's the information.
I guess it went, it went really smooth, like, with the dog thing, so. If anybody has any issues with dogs, I mean, she could hold it. Bruce and Scott, I mean, it's, that was quite a situation. And I mean, it turned out pretty easy and so. If anybody up there that has problems with neighbor's dogs, you know, well, you would mess it.
Well, Scott, uh, we, we dealt with Melissa Camo before in regards to, uh, find a real. A, a dog that's been surrendered to us. And, uh, she's a lady who took it and evaluated it and then, uh, took it in to have it spayed it. Town's paid for that. And then she took it up to Halifax. The only thing is like, uh, uh, there's still, uh, I discussed it with the C O in regards to Melissa's charge for doing what she did, a hundred dollars, so.
Well, I guess that's, she really solves the issue. I, I don't know what SPCA does. I saw them in those three towns the other day. But they're, but they're, uh, seizing animals in the industry. No, yeah. Okay, any questions for for our special cause? If, if none, we move on and you're free to go.
All right.
Thank you. Order of Nova Scotia, that comes every year. Uh, if anybody's got a permit calls, et cetera, downstairs, or you go online, well. Anybody feel like awful for that, or I know one that we did it for one and a task, but, uh, seems to be always people with PhDs and that kind of stuff. But there are people on the street, people all up with, and they're never, seem to get the stories. Yeah. Don't you know somebody? Autism Nova Scotia, they like to raise the flag, uh. So, CEO and I talked about it, uh, we have a special flagpole down, you know, down here for that reason. Yeah, so. We give that to them in our policy. Yeah. Yeah. So.
So there's no reason not to do it.
No, that, that's why we put that particular flagpole up and we said, because we'll leave a, leave the ones alone that are designated provincial, federal, town, those of, yeah.
Yeah.
Last one, last one, puts it to me, I see, the one that's a special purpose flag, so. And I think suggest, maybe we do that, try to get council, some staff together, we interact with that. I think Jeffy there brought it up, so, or something. Yeah, so.
When that's April the nineteenth, am I wrong?
Uh, yeah, the nineteenth, nineteenth. So we can get back to, to this person and say, yes, we, we will do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it Tuesday? I didn't know it was specifically. They're gonna, they're gonna provide it with the flag and then they're gonna, after, then they're gonna want it down. Can't remember.
I just closed the letter.
Yeah, uh, anyway, yeah, it's up for a couple of weeks or something like that and then they'll want it down because they want to go to the next one. Yeah. So, okay, uh, we'll do that.
See, yeah.
Okay, draft banner. And I mentioned to Leslie, there was a mistake in Brad Barton when he was inducted into Canadian Ball, Ball and Hall of Fame in two twenty twenty. But, uh, I think they, uh, and did you get a cost, Leslie?
No, I didn't, but I think the other brands are around a hundred dollars, have they gone to the dig?
Yeah. So I think we, something we should do and, uh, so I'm gonna make the motion, I would take it to council. For the two signs with the right dates and, uh. Could actually, I, I talk to Brad every few months, maybe I can say, Brad, if we do it, if we agree to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, do it on, uh, Diggie's birthday.
Yeah. We could ask Pop Smith if he wants to come.
He may want to come?
Yeah. Now, is this, where would you put them? Down, from there?
Down. Someone's had a prominent place and they're only prominent.
Yeah, put it right in the rock. With Joe Casey.
Hey, well, nice. Well, it's a motion, did you sign it?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Did you? I still wait for the flag too, my God. I made for that.
Over here.
Yeah, we got that, I can do all of it.
That is part of the.
It is, uh, I have been asked whether we consider doing veterans. I'd love to do veteran, but usually it's the Legion and those places that I've checked about communities that stepped up and gave.
Well, I was gonna bring up later on in the year about doing some of the veterans, I mean, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had that request, so I did look at the towns, I put them up and the money came from different sources.
Yeah.
But something to discuss, yeah. But you, very nice. Do you need to be, you know, is it town residents? Or, you know, there's a lot, you got, and there's a lot of veterans.
Well, if, if you serve, would you serve on their own side of the way to the road? I mean, you shouldn't restrict it from not.
But you wouldn't have enough holes for everybody?
Not for everybody.
Yeah, that's essential.
There's what, six holes down there? There's six down there.
There's not a lot of ground.
Well, you, that limits your town, yeah.
No, I mean, just on Senate tap area.
Yeah.
Senate tap area, you could do, if there's six holes, you'd twelve, like back to back.
Yeah, but you've got, there's something to think about.
Two hundred, yeah, something's there.
Most, uh. Okay. Taxi fares.
Wait, do we have to vote on that? Uh, didn't, didn't Peter put forth the motion?
Did your, your assistant go down?
Yeah, where you been?
All in favor of that motion, say aye, aye.
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 Okay. Uh, taxi fares, they sent a request.
There is one typo that is pointed out to me like today, on line D, on script D, line D. Right after the word Canada D P, fifty dollars and we brought it to sixty.
So sixty-sixty.
Yeah, just a small thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, what is it now with the D P?
Eight dollars, so it's a, it's a dollar increase since twenty eighteen. Yeah, twenty eighteen was the last time we asked for a rate increase in town. And they've also, they've got other rates that are also, uh, I think that's, oh, that wasn't included. But anyway, there's outside of town rates and the only license for taxiing within town, so. Or outside rates, whatever is they pick up in Conway, whatever they want to charge somebody at Conway, that's up to them.
Yeah.
Right? Because they're not licensed for Conway, they're just licensed for town D P. So we control the rates within, within town for big enough to do that. So we control the rates within, within town, we're picking up to do that.
Well, the fuel's at a high, it will drop a little bit, but it's not because of the back down work was a year ago. Yeah, it's gonna bump up, come down, bump up, let's continue with rise, so.
Yeah.
It's just, it's all fortunate, there's some people that can't afford the eight dollars, not gonna be able to afford nine, but that's a good conversation. They can operate.
Four years.
Yeah, they can operate on that kind of.
I don't see, uh, sometimes you get a Gavin and, uh, will say, well, you're a senior, we'll give you a, we'll take a dollar off, but, um, I don't know whether that was under written policy or just their, the driver's policy.
I think they can.
But there's a lot. There's a lot of seniors, so. Over half, well, well, almost.
Yes.
Thirty percent. But if we, I guess. I'll see, number E, let's say this town affairs, events of children to from school of elderly, disabled and or physically handicapped residents of the town, within the town D B, may be made by private arrangement with the owner of the driver of the license vehicle. That gives them, they don't need to give that.
Right, okay, that's true.
Yeah, cause if we said you have to.
Oh, yeah.
Then we're gonna be subsidizing.
Yeah.
It's not, say, well, yeah, you're, you've got to subsidize and that's a whole other administration.
I was slowing down in the schedule. Like I say.
Yep, that's good. I see Schedule E is what they actually put on the, in the car, advertised in the car.
Right.
And then Schedule B is what they're allowed to have to do. And that's one of the two schedules are there. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to take that.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. They'll be happy with that, hopefully a few will balance it. So we need a motion to, oh, no.
No.
One more.
Sorry, uh, artwork, our artwork. It is coming spring. Is there any chance that you have that done by then?
Maybe four and a half odd years.
It's been almost four years.
You go look at it.
Yeah, I don't wanna go look at it, I wanna see it on, on a wall.
So we're gonna have to, we'll have to ask, then the command say, listen, you know. Cause we don't even know what the final cost would be. So, uh, I'll ask Mr., I'll, I'll ask the, or ask the command. It's, it's been four and a half years, we don't know the cost.
So can you get him for the first one?
I'll ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we need this. I, I have to be down, move my, he should come and look, it's down, something down with the building, it's pretty impressive, but never really.
Yeah, it was paid so far, but if you have to pay it off, go move on to something else. I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, he is, yeah. Okay, I will, I'll reach out to him, I see him.
Yeah, we, we have.
Yes, or not.
Yeah.
Either.
Get it on, or move on to something else.
Okay. Move in the, move in camera. So moved. Second or?
Second.
Second.
Third. All in favor of that?
Yes.
Aye, push it carry. Does the dog eat a bun? Will the dog eat a bun? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we need a motion to accept the offer seventy nine plus 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 on bid number plus 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 plus.
So moved.
Inserting the right, uh, right of refusal on that one.
Second.
And then take that to council. Recommend to council and then, hopefully I can, hopefully you get Leslie to ask that question, cause you're off tomorrow.
Here tomorrow.
Okay, okay. That's what one of the reasons why I was coming in the day after the meeting is to wrap up, wrap up. The document from tonight and, uh, so I'll get my little lawyer and what I was gonna say is hopefully that he'll have a draft on purchase and sale agreement for council, you know, at. Winston, while you're here, but when you leave Winston, you come back in a few weeks and you see your office as the mayor on your door and your office up here, don't get worked up.
Got a better view up here.
Well, that's true, yeah. Okay, so that motion was made? You started it? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the last thing on the agenda, make a motion to go on.
So moved. I'm already home now.